Two o'clock, it looks like.
You have a meeting going?
Yeah.
Start off with the invitation of the judge, please.
We just to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome everybody here on this flying day. First thing we get up, everyone had a chance to read the minutes, the appropriate motion. First by legislator twist, second by legislator house. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? And approve? First item up. Resolution authorizing a budget margin modification for the Department of Solid Waste additional hours.
I was excited about that.
Moving along a lot.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, it's all.
All one through, man.
I don't have a problem with that. I see no reason, I mean, it's all, it's all stuff. It's not accepting grants or paying electricity, natural gas, service contracts.
Moving one through. Let me remind myself what they are.
It's just, you know, budget modifications for the most part. Service contracts for electricity, natural gas, accepting grants.
The rates on those are gonna have to be set that day in the legislature.
There's nothing.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
And there's a what? Four?
One nine.
Right, the motion to move them all is a block. First by legislator holes, second by legislator Lockwood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? I think that's a block.
Did he get you out of signing them?
Oh, I have to. Now we get to move on to bid report.
This is a correction, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Finish plasma cutter and ironworker. LSW 038.
Yes. LSW 038-19, finish plasma cutter and ironworker. Number of responses was one. Mid-Atlantic machinery, plane drivers per PA. Money bid coming in at thirty-four thousand, one forty-six, thirty-eight. Motion to accept that. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator House. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Carries? Alright, reporting departments, onto, uh, facilities. Oh, there's two of them there.
Two beds?
One and two. Now, the plasma cutter and ironworker. Shows them here both being together.
Oh, okay.
Yep, they're both together.
Yeah.
The whole bed says on the dog.
Okay.
Onto, uh, reporting department. Yeah.
Uh, group and windows, we're just waiting for the final payment. Same with the high bag, final payment application. Brickwork, they're finishing up as we speak. Um, had a couple little details to work out on the LB brickwork. DMV, um, they sent in that they're actually completed as of eleven one, right, which is right.
Let me see, thank you, Jan. To, uh, airport discussion.
We have, uh, two individuals that would like to build private hangars on field. Uh, this is more revenue for us, uh, more activity, more business on field. Uh, it would be the same lease format that we've used for years. And there is no potential for ideas. There is no goodies or present ideas. So just looking, I believe that, uh, Mr. Mitchell, we can do a five-year lease for a local law. I asked for a five year lease. Five-year lease for a local.
It's nothing we do today, correct?
It just needs committee approval, it doesn't need to go to the floor, it just need committee or committee blessing.
Committee blessing, four to five years.
So leasing the property to them?
They lease the property, they, at their own expense, they build the buildings and they lease the footprint of the property from us.
Okay, and at any point they don't pay the taxes, we take it.
It works back off, there's a clause in all these.
And this is going along through all our traditional standards.
Yep, the clause thirty cents a square foot, which is basically a little high compared to some other reports.
Okay, now, so the motion to move that, first by legislator holes, second by legislator twist. Any questions? All those in favor? Hearing aye? Hearing none? Any opposed? Hearing none? What carries? Thank you. Consolatus reports. Budget base budget report. And those are there to support the budget suspension. Budget board. Budget review. Not due to executive session now, maybe budget review. Five's probably the budget review. Yeah. Okay. I'll start the group first on that, uh, solid waste.
Let's see. Solid waste begins on page one forty.
Alright, so, um, I'm gonna go over it line by line, but a lot of them are the same. But overall, it's a half a percent increase over the last year's budgets, which will be covered by tipping fee. So, um, salaries and wages on the first page goes up a little bit, that's contractual. Same with the overtime payments. So then on to page, uh, one forty-one. Highway, street equipment actually goes down. Uh, if you know, we have the five-year plan, it's just whatever has to be on that purchase. And if you remember, we purchased two very big ticket items this year, so pretty good shape. On that page, you go all the way down, pretty much everything stays the same. Nothing that looks a little bit different is five, four, three, eight. That account pays for a lot of different things. That pays for, um, leachage, it pays for the recyclables to be processed at the matter of her come work. Um, it pays for household hazardous waste, it pays for the E-waste. And if you look now, there's an actual sub-line for E-waste. So it's actually still the same, the three hundred and sixty thousand, it's just three hundred and thirty stays in the main category. And thirty thousand is earmarked for what we paid for our E-waste contracts. Other than that, everything pretty much remains the same. On the page one forty-two. Did increase the, uh, the tipping fee revenues. Um, the last couple of years historically high, like in my thirty-year career, it's the highest it's been. So we're still right here to date, very strong, so that's why we increased that a little. Um, we actually decreased, uh, the revenue from the residential tipping fees. Because tradition continues every year, we sell less stickers. And that's pretty much where that revenue comes from. Pretty much the same on that page, so if we start, so if we start, yes, on page one forty-three, recovery, salaries and wages goes up a little bit, contractual. I think we'll be fine on the OT without raising that. Uh, additional hours, um, had to raise that, should have been raised last year, that was the arbitrary cut that we're not putting back with the previous resolution. You know, a couple of minor decreases on that line. On the page one forty-four, if you look, the highway expense, we bumped that up. Uh, if you remember, when we bid out our line, that went up eighty dollars a ton. And we, you know, approximately four hundred tons of line a year, so we increased that line because of that expense. So other than that, so really not many changes in the overall budget. The half percent increase, which will be covered by the, uh, the tipping fees. One thing I do wanna mention, not to anybody, but no planned increases for next year. But if the trend continues with the recycling market, we'll, we'll probably have to think about doing something different. Um, back in two thousand seventeen, we actually, um, received two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in revenue from the recyclables. Two thousand and eighteen, it cost us a little over eighteen thousand. Uh, so far this year, and I still have three months to go, it's cost us a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to process them. That's more than, you know, more than what there actually was, so. So at some point in time, you know, other missed dollars, we have to increase the tipping fee to cover the, the cost of that recyclable. So we're not there yet, but if, you know, the economy slows a little, and we don't take as much in waste, we may have to raise the fee just to cover the cost of the recyclables. But not yet.
We can't seem to find any use for it.
It's a, it's a, I mean, it's a nationwide thing because it's a worldwide thing, so trying to stop importing. You know, perhaps fifty to sixty percent of all the stuff went overseas anyway, so.
Motion to move, first by legislator twist, second by legislator holes. Anybody have any questions remark?
I just have on repairs and maintenance of equipment.
At which?
Page one forty-four. Five, four, two, zero, zero, zero. It just.
Which, which line number?
Five, four, two, two, zero, zero.
Um, so, there's a lot of things that, uh, that go into, uh, there's a lot of expensive equipment that, that are. Those Ingersoll, there's four giant Ingersoll Rand air compressors, and they're huge maintenance costs, and they're getting old. I mean, everything in there, the, uh.
You're anticipating.
Yes, and that, and the HVAC system on the main building is original equipment. They don't even make the free end to put in anymore, and we know we need to replace that. And we're looking at, you know, sixty to seventy thousand dollars just to replace the main HVAC system, so. Rather do cap a project, we've been trying to do all those bigger maintenance things in the actual budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Other than budget carries? Next up is facilities technology.
Thank you, um, starting with the building, the grounds project.
Page?
Forty.
Forty.
Building's grounds, I saw that was facilities.
Salaries and wages actually were, uh, went down a little bit. We had a couple retirees, long-term retirees, so the, uh, sales actually were the decrease. Um, we get the lectures, we, we're struggling, always getting the, um, solar credits enough, so we went from four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand in, in twenty twenty. I, with the, depending upon our contract that we're signing next week, we may be able to reduce that number even a little bit more as, um, as the budget process goes on. So if my reduction is up, it helps a little bit later, depending on calculations.
I'm like shocked, that was supposed to be so much of a reduction.
One, one of the things that they struggled with is that grid fought the interconnection between the solar farm and grid for over three years. Your first, obviously, the first, it's only got a twenty-year life, the first three years, massive generation of, of this, well, the first five. So that's really, uh, struggled. This year, we're only around, I think, well, we were just getting some those grid, there's bill issues. Building issue, we were connecting striker bills until yesterday, or excuse me, that Friday. Um, I think this year we're gonna end up right now with about seventy thousand dollars in solar savings. I don't want, was it a hundred and seventy thousand, but I heard how, know all those numbers exactly. But we're not getting the savings from much of the incentive.
So the return on it mostly is horrible.
I, I don't know what the county actually paid as compared to put it in, and then, to my knowledge, we haven't bought the, the solar farm. In fact, it has a five-year, you wanna buy it in five years, year ten, year twenty. So we haven't purchased the farm to my knowledge.
It's got a twenty-year lifespan, you're saying?
Twenty-year interest. So we'll probably answer that, but.
But the equipment, the durable equipment is only good for twenty years, to my very.
That's your maximum, from what you told, your, your, this, where you get the best, unfortunately, it continues to degrade from day one through, so.
Because it took us about two years to get it.
About three to get it connected.
So that, I think we tried to make sure that that was going to be added back on the other end, because it just sat there for three years. So, I don't know if they ever got it straightened out, I think Mitchell's taking care of that.
So just sitting there for three years, that was caused by the grid?
National grid and the Public Safety Service Commission, there's a couple deals on how the interconnection goes from the actual solar farm. So you can up, put it right into the national grid system. And it's, uh, when I'm told, it's been something they've fought on a lot of these. I'm not sure if they're losing money on that at all, I don't have the total detail, but it's not something they say, sure, no problem, and, you know, with open arms to those types of solar farms.
Well, they weren't, no to solar farm.
No, yeah. No savings at all.
What did the solar farm cost us out of pocket? I know there were grants, I know there were.
I, I don't know, that was offered in place before I got here, so I don't have those numbers.
We can get that information. So when it gets back, it's just, that's.
No, I don't think.
I feel like it was covered through a grant, the whole thing.
I don't think it's maybe.
I wasn't hearing, I remember to the Coca-Cola, the national grid.
I'm not sure.
Well, that's, that's a good point, because I don't know if they hook up, they had to do through national grid, it was charged to them. To them, to the solar companies, but they went out in the solar company.
And then one by Tesla, no, actually. Solar.
Like he said, or was it Tesla?
That tool was when we took, when we, uh, we hooked it up. It was actually Tesla at that point. It was SolarCity.
Because I know they, they had, um, SolarCity, an impact on us actually getting a lot of capital.
So these, Tesla, could we use OTAS for this? Uh, I don't believe so, because I didn't start before we get OTAS. We use OTAS for, uh, energy upgrade.
Right.
Doesn't seem like it costs us anything, though. It was like, it's there.
So there was, there's a lecture, so these one identified, the other one is water, the water rates continue to decline, be impacted, so it's up a little. Gas, natural gas is up ten thousand from last year. Again, we're signing a contract, we get, go down, let's do some numbers once we get the actual contract. At the end of the day, though, the, uh, county cost and BNG budget is twelve thousand less than last year. Any questions on the facilities, on the budget on that one?
Any other questions? Move up to the discussion. First by legislator twist, second by legislator house. Anyone have any questions? All those in favor? Oh, no, this one was just all finished, so you said you said more than one.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Page forty-six for central services, I keep budget. Um, that budget has one thing in it, on the, on the personnel side, it has a summer interim request for seventy-two hundred dollars, that's a little different than, than we had before. And utilize that to do some of the current work that we don't always get done. And there's quite a few hours in there, because we'd also like to have the person work at Christmas time, when we're trying to front all the tax books and stuff. Sometimes it's just moving stack paper from here and there, so there's an additional, um, seventy-two hundred dollars in, um, personal services for that. Still, uh, we haven't met the reduction. Which, uh, but we did have, uh, some long-term staff leave, so actual personal services was down from last year. Um, repairs and maintenance, we, we, the synaptic project that was, out of that seven hundred and five thousand adopted in twenty nineteen. That'll be complete, well, when does it, uh, sometime in twenty twenty? Probably six, gonna cost us one one in twenty twenty, so that's one reduction. And then, working with, uh, the Vineski Group and, um, ESS. We're able to get into a reimbursement situation with some of the IP staff and, uh, all the other items that IP provides, office three sixty-five, units, those types of things. We're actually gonna have an income of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, or in terms of extra dollars, oh, five hundred thousand worth. So at the end of the day, we're five hundred thousand less than last year.
This forty-six is.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, well, never mind, I got.
Yeah, it's the wrong year.
legislator shot?
Consulting.
Where am I?
Page forty-seven?
Yes, uh, ten thousand.
So why, why so change from sixty-eight, four, seven, two?
In twenty eighteen, actually. I believe in twenty eighteen, we did, um, somewhere with Munis Consulting and other consulting to get, ended up.
And also, we, we put the money for the final deal.
Final deal went in there, too, that was thirty thousand or something like that, final deal.
So we're done with studies, right?
We could do one right now. Personally, I wanna study how long it takes David Spear to get that law.
You gotta ways to go.
He's not worth three grand.
If you do a fundraiser, I could take it out.
You'd raise some serious money.
Right.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, no, they're opposed? I had one position. I thought they just, they just had by a first by hold. So if it, you know, we had a first and then a second, and then I ask for any questions, that's my Murray.
Okay.
All good? What's your order?
Yeah.
You really sell that.
I start on page one forty-six. Back of the book.
Go further and where's yours, huh?
Yeah, I know. First page done, it's all kind of road, that's pretty much all the office stuff. Not much change there. Um, if you look on the, uh, page one forty-seven on top. You'll see, uh, D fifty-ten, forty-three, five, zero, one, zero, state eight consolidated highway, you see there's nothing there. And that was moved to a new department, which is fifty-one, twelve, a chip line, that's a bit too weighted on, but that's why that's a zero, etcetera. Um, engineering, pretty much the same. And then you're down to fifty-one, ten, maintenance roads, bridges, after, most of our guys are out of. Salaries are up. Um, overtime payments on the next page, um, pretty much stayed the same. Uh, that's for snowmobile and emergency. We did use some of it this year to, uh, this year and last summer to pay the parking lots and stuff that we did with OTAS. Build it back to the, uh, project to keep our budget in place, if we try to keep it. Most of the lines, what you said, are about the same.
Right?
You get down to, uh, on page one fifty, three quarters of the way down, that's a new department, fifty-one, twelve, the chip. And you'll see the state consolidated highway there, there's a new line for that. Next page, snowmobile, this is where my budget took a pretty good jump. As you can see, the, uh. Contract, a firm-out contract with the towns, uh, for eight thousand dollars a mile. And you have every town on board, at the present time, except for one, which for obvious reasons, we don't. And, uh, that's where that line is, and that's where my budget takes the biggest jump. Alright. We can move on to the airport, I mean, I can jump down in the scenery, or run into the airport, and you know, put a machine out. Yeah, we'd be able to go separate, right? Well, signs on the whole.
You can do that, it's all, you wanna, you wanna take care of the airport, or you gonna bring it?
I don't, we didn't change much.
Yeah, the airport didn't really see much of a change. We did increase, uh, very small on the revenue line for the new hangers to be constructed.
One to fifty-two. Starts on one fifty-one, five.
And everything else is within the budget, we just moved, uh, a little bit around within the budget. So the only increase that we did see is on revenue line, and that's anticipated for the new hangers and the rental fees. The, uh, sale of supplies is our gas sales. Uh, that's been a lofty goal for a couple of years that we have not met, so we did leave that the same as previous years, in the hopes that we actually reach that goal. This, in twenty twenty, with the, uh, increased airplanes at the facility.
We increased that, I hope some of you guys have been here a while, we increased that back, we had a helicopter base. Base when they were doing power line, working that, and that's why.
Yeah, that's what it does.
Sales went up, so we incorporated into our budget that time.
And we actually did discuss with that same helicopter company about two weeks ago, uh, the possibility of them coming back next year, so. While we have no commitment, we're very hopeful, and I started that discussion, so.
Tell them to make them copy.
Yeah, absolutely, I would be happy to make them copy to see those fuel cells.
Page one fifty-four, is, uh, on machinery side, mechanic side of the budget. And pretty much everything there is the same. Salaries obviously went up. And we're working everything else, very much.
Thank you.
And equipment there, highway and street, we put it in every year, just to, uh, on, uh, fifty-two, four thousand. On page one fifty-four, we put that in, that's my five-year plan, put that in every year, in hopes that some year, it'll stay in the budget. And then, uh, well, that's our goal, is to have a realistic budget, sorry, it's not, I think, we have a realistic budget, we don't have the equipment anymore. So someday we might like to move towards keeping that money in there for the. And down on, uh, page one fifty-five, um, department fifty-one, thirty-two, that's setting for, for a fleet manager when we decide to fill that position.
Understand.
And that's, I mean, I'll answer any questions, that's pretty much my budget. If there's a motion to move for discussion.
Move it.
First by legislator shot, second by legislator holes. Any questions? Any questions? My legislator shot.
Current of fleet management.
Nope.
What, what are the benefits of a fleet manager, and what have other areas benefited from a fleet manager?
Well, we're. Well, we're looking, obviously someday to incorporate all county vehicles at our facility. And then we can pass over to him some of the, uh, the specs, uh, on the vehicles, maybe getting to where all departments, let's say, have the same cars, same motors, same everything, and he would be in charge of all of that, and also, uh, maintenance records. And there's just a, there's a slew of opportunities out there that, for us to do that, I think. There, there, you got other departments that are paying outside sources, which there's probably a con there, you know, some people say that you're, you're taking stuff away from the private contractor, but we can do a lot of that stuff, we can do all of it in-house, actually. He sets up pretty much everything at both facilities, and we can put him in charge of our, um, parts, our, our inventory, and pretty much, um, what do I want to say, your work orders, your vehicles and all that stuff, just to, uh, take the stuff from the work order, put it into the computer, so it's in there. Because the, the real vision would be to go into your computer, and then you could look at everybody's inventory. Say, uh, say, I'm looking for a tire here, uh, whatever, I can go and say, well, Solid Voice has got one that I can use, or whatever, and then take it, when you buy it, it goes back to him, and, uh, unless Phil's got other ideas on how to buy it, the infancy stages.
What would the employment requirements be for this job? Do you have to be fluent in diesel and? I mean, what, what are the requirements?
I can't remember, I'll read it off.
We have a draft, uh, we have a draft, uh, job description and clause from last year. There's a, need somebody who can understand, obviously, inventory, computer, uh, computerized inventory, with someone with some type of fleet management experience, preferably. One of the, uh, in addition to what Kurt said, with the experiment we're doing now with health, with the enterprise, Rapid Police Fleet, which so far is working very well, uh, we went to that countywide, that person would be managing that contract as well. And, uh, standardization of parts, setting up standardized, uh, maintenance schedules. Right now, we have, like, a, a department, like Highway, does it very well, but you have Health, and all their expertise is, um, health programs, but they have a fleet of, of vehicles, and you got an account clerk who's managing the fleet there. If you put all that into Highway's responsibility with experienced person, knows cars, who can set them up on replacement plans and maintenance schedules, uh, theoretically, you have a more efficient fleet, uh, vehicles that are readily available when needed, and, uh, some cost savings because you're standardizing, uh, certain types of vehicles.
How many vehicles are there at countywide?
Could have to go into inventory. Yeah, it depends on what you count as a vehicle, if it is rolling stock, you get in the hundreds, but.
Yeah, we, we count enough, just what's added on top of ours, it'd be another three hundred and fifteen cars or vehicles, or something like that, on top of what we have.
Think, who's the sheriff's patrol unit?
Yep, at any given time, how many vehicles are out of service, would you say?
Other departments?
We don't know.
That's the part that you know. I mean, you listen to people talk and say, well, there's cars in the park for, because there's a little tick here, there's cars in the park, because I don't think the phrase work, so they don't, they really don't know, because they don't have anybody on staff to really. So definitely give us a better, more accurate view of all of our vehicles, and you're speaking to one person that can answer questions across the board on any vehicle the county will have, as opposed to trying to chase them down the way we do now.
And the maintenance schedule? This would, this doesn't call for hire at this moment, though, correct?
It's, I believe we left it in the, the actual budget last year, we just took the actual summer money out.
No, the, the, yeah, it had to be, you can't leave your position in the budget with no money in it.
Well, we, what we agreed is it was coming out, and we bring it back this year.
I mean, I just, I have reservations about it, but I guess I don't know enough about it. I'd like to see the hiring requirements. Um, and what, who is using fleet management? Are there other counties that are successfully using it right now?
There's a, there's a number of surrounding counties that, that do all the maintenance, right, the county highway drivers, yeah.
Would this person do maintenance as well, or just keep track of things?
I would think that this person here, he would, can he do maintenance? He should be able to, yes indeed. But his priority job would be to maintain the infrastructure that he have and, and want. And then in special occasions, yeah, I think he would have to go out and do something, oversee, oversee more juniors or what have you, you know? I mean, he would like a person there that maybe the head mechanic had somebody just a notch up that he could go have a little conversation with when they run into a little situation with a transmission or what have you.
I'd feel way more warm and fuzzy hiring a diesel mechanic, but.
Well, they have to have that sort of a background.
Certification.
I'm pretty sure that that was in the.
They would also benefit us when we go to purchase a vehicle or something like that, I'd rather have the mechanics in for that, so.
But I, it's important, and I know the requirement, that he could, in fact, or she, or they could maintain, repair, do things, other than said at computer.
Oh, I agree with it, I like to use anybody, obviously. All right, we're on there, we had a first and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? There you go. There you go, and I don't know everyone should have had this passed around.
Yeah, I apologize this, uh, this last minute. What, what was passed around is apparently, uh, the last month or the month before, when the rental equipment bid was approved for this committee, Anandaga had left, uh, a bit off, and we're asking for, so for the fairness to the vendor, for the, uh, committee to, uh, correct for the record. What it is, is lot eleven, Monroe tractor had bid, and then they had been left off the original print that was approved by committee before. We'd simply like you to, requesting you to, uh, move in second and go to, uh, correct that bid award, so that Monroe tractor's included. Well, this is, this is a rental, everybody gets. They can run it as they're available.
Understand, first by legislator holes, second by legislator twist, all those in favor?
Thank you.
So this is just adjusting the list, we literally adjusted that last.
Is it the last month or the month before? It's correcting that, because they, they had old gentleman, they just, whoever typed it up in Anandaga.
Okay, I believe that's it, we're looking to go into executive, this executive session to discuss the, uh, B and B project. I'll just go in the executive section by legislator twist, second by legislator holes. All those in favor?
Hi.